Good afternoon, it's Tuesday, February twenty second, twenty twenty-two at six P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select meeting. We are gonna do things a little bit out of order today out of respect for people's time. So first, we're gonna go to agenda item fifteen, which is a discussion on the parking limitations at town hall. And first, I'll kick over to Debbie just to kind of talk about the current situation.
Yeah, so you know, at the town hall, if you're, if you're a resident trying to come to do business there, it's difficult to find parking. But even as, you know, personnel, we currently have twenty-four employees and we have eighteen parking spots. So, and then we have three town vehicles that we have. So we end up with twenty-seven vehicles and eighteen parking spots. So it's been an issue and I think it's, as we have filled some spots with employees, we're having a much more difficult time parking and there just is no place to park. There's a couple of parking spots on the street in front of the church and that's it. I mean, there is no other place for people to park. So I am, you know, it's just an issue. And I would really like to take two spots and designate them for residents only, so that the employees don't park there, so that if you are coming to the town hall to do business, you can pull into the parking lot and come into the town hall. I just don't know where we would put the other vehicles.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of ideas. I know I think that's what Jeff is here for. I mean, I thought maybe we put some of the town vehicles up at the town barn. That, that's three vehicles where they would have to go there and swap out vehicles. But that still doesn't really solve my problem. The church is not inclined at this time. They're having their own issues with their parking lots. So they're, they really can't afford us on a regular basis parking. They allow us to use their parking lot during, when, when we have tax, when it's tax bill time and whatnot. So, and the only other spots we have is in front of the bandstand, sort of on the street. That I thought is to rotate employees. Every Monday, these four employees have to park over there. Every Tuesday. It's not ideal, but I don't know what the solution is, so I don't know what Jeff has.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, I did sit down with Debbie and we did discuss a lot of the stuff, options. I said that where we park the town vehicles on the, on the side by the school, we could get a couple more vehicles because Nadine, Tim, myself, we all parked there closer to the schoolhouse. Behind the town vehicles, we can park at least a couple more. So that would eliminate some of that. I do like the idea to park the town vehicles over at the highway barn. We'd go there, get the vehicles, because we're in and out most of the time. As long as we have that area next to the schools for those town vehicles to still park there. That would relieve, you know, spaces there and we can move a couple other people to, by the school, to park there. Those are the people that would, we know that they're gonna be leaving right at four. Because if someone parks in front of us and they're not leaving at four, it kind of creates a little anxiety trying to get out. But we've been shuffling around pretty good. When we had the town vehicles there, Tim and I, I usually would park behind them. I know that he's in and out. If I had a, a inspection to do, knowing that that's his vehicle, I'd just get ahold of him. Because he'd be in the town hall at that time. So this way, he'd just move it, I'd take off, and then he would back up. So whoever's in first backs up to an area. We always try to keep an area up front for the fire chief to park. Police chief usually parks across the street. But dealing with that water truck as well, we tried to leave those spots open for the front. David is really leaving, you know, he leaves at four o'clock, so it hasn't really been an issue. He was, ended up talking one time to, to the former. And they were there for a little bit and we're trying to get out. And it's like, wow, that, we gotta kind of explain it maybe a little better. Didn't mention to him, you know, if you have a spot there, park it, as long as you're out by four, there wouldn't be an issue. But we could try and put two more vehicles over where we park.
Still, this is a Band-Aid.
It is a, it is a Band-Aid. I mean, but you need a Band-Aid right now.
Even if we still do that, it's still not enough. So we're still gonna have to park people. So that's, that's great that we can get a couple more people over there, because it puts that many more people within close proximity to the building.
Right.
But we're still gonna have to park people at the bandstand. And then, and unfortunately, we have to put the, do the switch off at the town barn, I think. If that's my, my opinion.
Yeah. Jeff, what about behind the old schoolhouse? I know we've talked somewhat about that.
We could. I mean, I've had to leave and the other cars would kind of walk me in and I kind of went out the back way and came around. I don't know if a regular car or your car wouldn't be able to do it, because they have that little curb in there for that.
Is that driveway bars or the neighbors?
Yeah, that, I'm trying to think, is the last name.
Yeah.
I don't think it's ours, right?
But if that, I think that things have been tossed up. I don't know how the board would feel about it, but this, this might be something that, I mean, we can maintain that front part that we would be using and, you know, we either pave it or to that, to that one point. This way, you know, it wouldn't be something that, he's saying, well, you're ruining my driveway by turning in that area. Or even sanding the driveway or, or something quick. Somebody said, well, what if we plow it and then we could use it? I see an issue with that is, because if a town plow truck goes down that driveway and hits some of the, the curb in that he has.
We're liable.
Yeah, we're liable to, to do that. That's the only thing about plowing the thing, but to sand that, that front part, you know, a truck back up and then, you know, they take off. I, I personally don't see an issue with that, providing that he would be on board with that.
Yeah, we'd have to ask.
Is it, so that's School Street? That's like the name of, it's like a private road?
It's a private road, right. So we would have to ask. I mean, we could ask that, at least, not to park on it, but to at least utilize it if we sort of all park, if they park behind the school, old schoolhouse, so that they could drive out of it.
Yeah, I think it's at least definitely worth the conversation.
Yeah, I can have that conversation.
But I think also in the meantime, do we start trying to put people over at the bandstand?
I, I think I'm, you know, I've been trying to just kind of wait for the weather to turn a little bit, but I think it's inevitable. I think that's what I'm gonna have to do, rotate and make it fair. You know, everybody has one day a week that they have to park over there and.
We just own the spots in front of the, um, so, and there's also in grandpa's spot, you know, there's other parking in there, but we don't own that.
No.
Should, would it be worth having a conversation with them?
I will have a conversation.
Yeah, see if we can rent a couple of those spaces from them? Because that could, that looks like, I'm looking on Google Maps right now.
It might be safer.
Yeah, and it might be like eight or nine spots right there, easy, that we could get.
I will call him and I will communicate back to you tomorrow then.
All right, that'd be awesome.
Because I, I mean, I feel like there's some under, you know, that parking lot's never, I've never seen it very full, right?
You know, hopefully we have something.
Last couple of weeks, it's really been, it's packed.
Really?
People parking right in front of the town hall.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I'm saying grandpa's, the grandpa's spot.
Our town hall has been, it's just increasingly getting worse as we, we are fully staffed.
Yeah.
And so, if everybody's in, we just, even myself, I've had to pack on the street. I've come there and I've just been driving around like, I'm the town administrator, I can't park.
Yeah.
I guess I'm working from home today. I, I don't know. I mean, you know, it is, it's, it's a problem. So I don't know that, we don't have, come up with a solution. I wanted to just make you aware of how bad it's gotten down there. And again, if you're a resident, I can't imagine the frustration of trying to come there and pull a building permit or try to talk to somebody and there's no place for you to park.
Because we do need a solution and I a hundred percent agree with you that it would be nice to have two, at least two parking spots up front. I'd say these are for residents.
Like, like twenty minute, twenty minute parking?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just so they can come and, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I think we have a couple of options we can go down and try to, try to figure out. I think definitely talk to whoever owns School Street. And then also grandpa's, you know, to see if potentially they're willing to rent out a couple of spots to us. I think, you know, if it's not a crazy expense, it makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, park and over the town vehicles over at the highway.
And then highway department as well.
That's gonna free up three vehicles right there.
Yeah, perfect.
And with that freeing up three vehicles, that actually puts, we're able, we would be able to put more vehicles by the school area.
Yeah.
Because at that point now, you're, we're down to one vehicle there and we usually have three, sometimes four.
All right.
I'll talk to Chuck and just make sure he's okay with parking on that. I haven't had that conversation, not that I, I think he'll be fine, but I.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely work with it.
For him that opportunity to have that conversation.
All right, all right, so I think we're good on this one. I don't think really it requires any votes. All right, now Lori, let's jump over to you. So, I mean, you stay here all day. So just Lori, just embarrassed to public nurse update on COVID nineteen. Sorry, stealing your thunder, poor to hell.
Excuse myself, I'll go to the town hall and I'll check that through.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can text me and let me know, probably make out with it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so one of those. So COVID nineteen update, total case count for town of Freetown since the beginning is two thousand three hundred and two. We currently have thirteen active cases. Case count in the past two weeks has been sixty-seven and the fourteen day positivity rate is ten point nine one. So obviously, Freetown is seeing what, you know, what the state is seeing, decrease in numbers, which is, you know, a good sign. As far as case counts, you know, in December, we had had three hundred and seventy-five. January is where we definitely peaked. We had six hundred and seven cases for the whole month of January. And so far for the month of February, we're at seventy-one. Last year, we were at ninety-four, so we're actually lower than last year, which is definitely.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, definitely encouraging news. And also, the schools, they also, they've had a total of nine hundred and sixty-three cases for the whole school year. And last week, they had only reported, had nine cases reported to them. So they're also seeing the decrease. Also, effective Monday, February twenty-eighth, Desi, who guides the schools, the mask requirement is being lifted statewide. And the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District has also adopted that. So when they get back from school vacation, the mask is normally mandated. And obviously, students, teachers, faculty, everyone is, they can wear the mask, but it's not gonna be required when they return back from school vacation. They had also moved to new testing programs where now, instead of doing like the test and stay and they're moving more to a symptom-based testing. So if there's any students or staff that are symptomatic while they're in school, they would go down to the nurse and be tested. And then they also opted in the home testing program. So according to the principal's corner, there are two thousand and ten that have opted in the program and that would be both students and staff. So what that is, is every two weeks, they get two test, home test, which they administer at home and then report it to the school and then they're positive on those testing. So that's the program that the school is currently doing.
Great.
As far as the cases for the month of February, the highest two groups that Freetown has seen was out of those seventy-one, twenty-six of them were the thirty to forty-nine age group. And the next highest was the five to eleven. There was twelve cases in that age group. So that's where most of the cases were.
That's it? Yeah, so I think we still have, we also have her for the.
Yeah, so you want to move on to that? Yeah, well, I appreciate that, Lori, thank you. And then we have agenda item number eighteen, discussing vote on offering vaccination clinic and then the potential invoicing.
So I gave you both the potential warrant and then also just some information regarding a water health vaccination program. So we, in the past, we've currently had stuff and shop pharmacy that has come into town and done on vaccination clinics. We've done the C O A. They're not huge clinics that we've had. Most, I looked, last year, we had done, let's see, I can't remember here. Last year, we did about thirty-five. We did thirty high-dose vaccines and then five regular. So the program, once it gets up and going, kind of sustains itself. And that's why I talked to Kim regarding a revolving fund. So what the warrant, the warrant would be, so the purpose would be a water health vaccination program. It would offset the cost of the vaccines, supplies, wages, and capital needs. The fees credited to the account would be fees collected from medical billing for vaccines and administrative charges and representative authorized to spend. I'd put myself there, it could even be myself or someone else that the board feels would be authorized to spend the money and the money would be spent on, you know, the vaccines and then any supplies that go along with that. And to establish the fund, looking for around three thousand five hundred dollars to initially start it up. And the reason for that is you would have to purchase the vaccine and then, once the vaccines are administered, then at that point, you do the billing for, there's two fees you can get reimbursed for. One would be the administrative fee and then there's also the fee you would get for the actual cost of the vaccines. So most of the vaccines that we'd be looking at would be looking at helping the seniors. They're the ones who have mostly come to our vaccination clinics. Obviously, we would start it out small and then if this is something that more people are interested in getting vaccines, then we could obviously expand the program after that. I had called and got the Medicare, and these are twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two Medicare reimbursement rates. So for the high-dose vaccine, the administrative rate you'd get reimbursed would be seventeen eighty-six. And the, the cost of the vaccine reimbursement would be sixty-five twenty-six. So what I included on this vaccination program for the fees, this, the cost of vaccine this year, the rate was fifty dollars and eighty cents per dose. So we would obviously cover the cost of the dose and we'd have, you know, some money left over as far as for the administrative cost.
Great, so where would this be held? Just out of curiosity, like the actual vaccines?
The actual vaccines, so through COVID, we had received, we were able to get money to purchase a vaccine refrigerator.
Sorry, that makes sense. I meant like where are we gonna administer the vaccines? Like where, where will they be given? Do we do it at the C O A or?
So my thought would be like the C O A, we could do it there, which is where we've held clinics before. And then also with doing the COVID vaccines, have found that there's people who are homebound. So I'd also be able to offer it to homebound residents.
That's gonna be my next question, because obviously, those are the most vulnerable ones, right? So.
Right, and we have, you know, some, was able to find out some of those people who they are through the COVID vaccine.
So we have a, yeah, a starting point with the database.
So I'm looking at flu, but this, you know, depending, obviously, they're talking going forward that, you know, COVID vaccines could be, could be an annual thing. Where this also would cover the cost for, you know, we could also do COVID vaccinations.
That makes a lot of sense to me, you know, this seems like, oh, we have the new normal, right? So might as well prepare for it.
Yeah, so we had, we have obviously done some of the COVID vaccines and there's a process as far as getting reimbursed. So I have been achieved a help, but also it's kind of been a long process. In order to get reimbursed vaccines, you have to get an M P I number, get approved by Medicare, Mass Health. And just recently, I was able to get the M P I number. So we are able to get the Mass Health on board, I'm sorry, Medicare on board. And then we're, right now, we're in the process of doing Mass Health. Also Commonwealth Medicine, they will do, they're who I've used in other towns. They will do the, all the billing for you. They just take ten percent, which is not much compared, you know, as far as, and they'll do all the billing. So they'll build to, they'll send the billing to Medicare, Mass Health, and also to all the private insurance companies.
That's gotta be the biggest, you know, headache, right? Is that part of it, so?
The billing, right.
Yeah.
And so that's where I'm, that's my next step. I'm actually working with Commonwealth Medicine. They're going to be sending me the application for the contract to fill out. So that would be something that I'd be bringing to the board also.
Is that something we would have to put up with, Jeremy? I don't think, I'm just asking just because I don't want her to do all this work to find out.
For the billing?
Yeah, because is it based on the amount? I don't know.
I doubt it. It's because it's probably not gonna be in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I, I just was asking. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to have, send it up more than one company. And that way, you weren't just sending it to this one company and then we find out we need to have three, you know, so that's why.
Yeah, Commonwealth Medicine, I can find out. They're someone who, they do it for a lot of the, a lot of Massachusetts. A lot of the vaccine reimbursement kind of goes through them. Most people do it themselves or go through Commonwealth Medicine to do the billing.
And with as busy as everyone is in that town hall and how particular you have to be when it comes to medical billing, the ten percent is probably a no-brainer.
Yeah.
And the other thing too, which, when I got the M P I number and applying for all of that, one thing that they were able to actually let us do is back our application back up to April first of twenty twenty-one. So once all this is through, we're actually gonna be able to get reimbursed for the COVID vaccines that we've already administered.
Oh, that's great, aw, awesome.
So they were able to back, back that up for us. So once, so that also will be, so when that money comes in, that also would go into this, if we can do this revolving fund, it would already, you know, go into that. So they will do that billing for us also. And through the state, they have this platform that's called Color, which is what we use at our clinics. And so it, it makes it easier for people to register, they have all the information in there. And Color then sends automatically, transmits it to M I S, which is where all the vaccines have to be documented for the state. It also directly goes to Commonwealth Medicine. So there is not any paperwork or anything extra that we have to do. Once you put it into that system, it's.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, it's not something that the town or has to pay for that platform. It's actually the state pays for that.
So I'm completely on board with this. I have one last question.
Sure.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, is that enough? And the reason why I ask is because I feel like, you know, to everyone's point before, it's gonna grow, it's gonna continue to happen every year. You're gonna have more people, you're gonna get involved. You're going based off the last year's numbers that probably didn't involve some of these people that you've become friendly with that are homebound. So the breakdown of the numbers that you gave us, Lori, puts us probably what? It probably gives us what, five hundred dollar buffer? So do you think that asking for a little bit more? Because I don't know, are we gonna have to do this every year and change? Is the number gonna be easy to change every year, I guess?
Well, we shouldn't, I mean, one, since it all should be reimbursed.
Yeah, but that's, I, and the costs go up and as more people get involved, are we gonna outgrow that thirty-five hundred dollars by next year? So I just wasn't sure if that's something we can easily change year to year?
It's the first year that's gonna be super important, right? Once she has the amount established and she starts to do vaccines or the vaccine clinical, however it works, the reimbursements will come and keep the, the account flowing. But I agree, that's very tight for the first year, because that limits.
Too high.
Right, that really limits what you can do. So maybe because of COVID, people are gonna be more apt and be like, I really need to get the flu shot this year. And you get a hundred people come out to a clinic. You, you're not gonna have the money to, and yes, it will be a little bit of a problem to then get money to fund this, because it's gonna be its own independent fund.
And she brought it up before, the homebound people, how many roughly did you do homebound last year? Or this year through COVID? It was quite a big number.
Because we went out to them several times.
I don't need an exact, I was just trying to get some sort of.
Maybe like, I guess around thirty or somewhere around there.
Thirty people to this and we're already putting ourselves in the red. So I just wondered if you could increase the, the money right up front. And if there's a little extra money in the fund, so be it. I'd rather have a little extra than not enough.
My only other thing that I guess we'll have to figure out too is, so with the vaccine and the reason why I'm kind of bringing this up now, one for the warrant, but also with flu vaccines, you actually order, pretty much, I think the deadline is like March eighteenth. So pre-register for the fall. So that's also something we have to look at. You know, I don't wanna order too much. You are allowed to, you know, return, usually, I think right now, it's, last year was ten percent. I haven't even talked to the, the company to see what their return, what percentage that you can return. So I don't wanna order too many, but also obviously wanna order enough. So that's why, the other thing too, so I will have to, vaccine shop is who I've used as far as getting vaccines. So I do need to apply to them, you know, become a customer for them. So that would be a process I'll work on also. But, so I guess we need to figure out, I have to figure out too exactly. So I put like forty, so that's where that amount, money came from.
And I liked what you went off of, because you went off based off of last year, right? And it, it makes sense. And I would rather say that we had to throw away a couple than not be able to offer a couple. So I appreciate you being.
Yeah.
I'd rather spend a little extra.
So what, what are you doing, five K?
Yeah, I, I think five thousand was what came to the head. What, what do you think that, do you think that's fair, Lori?
I think that's fine, yeah. I think we, we can look at it and, because the warrants, we're still working on them, right? So we can look at it and.
I, I wasn't sure, because we had to vote on adding this, right? Then do we need, did we need the exact amount in there?
Yeah, I think that, I don't know that you're gonna vote on this warrant article tonight, are you?
Yeah, I think this will just be added as a bigger, I, I thought the same thing, but then I was looking at it. I think it makes more sense, because we're gonna vote on all the articles.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna put the, all the articles to you guys and then you're gonna.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right.
Vote, you're gonna vote to place them on, on the warrant, is what you're gonna do once the articles come in. So we don't need to really vote on this as it's in front of you.
But I do think, you know, we should up it to five thousand. That makes more sense to me. I'd rather have the buffer, rather be safe and sorry and.
And I think that will help too, because obviously with, obviously the money coming up front, but depending on when we're getting around to next year, you know, reimbursement comes in after.
Exactly.
It'll, it'll take a little bit before it all kind of starts to.
Most things fail.
And we get a hundred percent reimbursement, right? So there could be some, some sort of hiccup where we might not get a reimbursement on someone because of something. And those little things can add up to bigger dollar amounts and stuff.
And most ventures fail because they're under-capitalized. So if we can properly capitalize that, then it would be settled.
It's for the greater good of the town, so I appreciate you doing that, Lori, thank you.
So yeah, so I don't think, this is great, nothing to vote on right now, right? Okay, but definitely have our support on that, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lori.
Lori, did you wanna ask them about the COVID tests?
All right, great, great. So there are some home tests that would, Lakeville had some extra home tests that they said that would be available to Freetown if we were interested. So I don't know if that's what the warrant wants us to, I don't know if there's, you know, people that, I'm thinking more elderly, but they do have some tests that they could offer to us if they want to distribution.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess we would need to find out the amount and then we can figure out the proper way to distribute them through you and everyone else, right? Figuring out whether it is to the, the homebound people that can't get help, get a test, is it to?
See, I mean, or just go, I'll go through the C O A, right?
C O A, yeah.
See where their, where their needs are. And that makes more sense.
Let's get it to the most vulnerable people in town. So yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because they've got a bunch of the warranty, so.
It's funny, it's like, I, you know, I've tried buying them the last couple of weeks and like, impossible to get them. Yeah, but they, yeah, we were able to find them on walmart.com.
Okay. Yeah, so there, all right, so I will reach out to them and let you know.
All right, great. All right, thank you very much.
We appreciate your time as always, Lori.
All right, so now moving on to our normally scheduled events here. Alright, so now moving on to our normally scheduled events here. So um George is not here tonight, so I'll do the personnel board. Um so first is acknowledging the resignation of Benjamin L A Leveque from the building committee effective two fifteen twenty twenty-two. Even though we don't have to vote on this, I'll entertain a motion to accept this resignation.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um so approve the senior work program participants for the cycle commencing November twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, should be twenty twenty-two.
No, began last November twenty twenty-one.
Number twenty-one, uh spread by the council on aging director Barbara Place. I'll read these folks' names real quick.
They have to be kept confidential.
Oh, never mind, I will not, thank you. Uh so, I guess I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the senior work program participants.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need you guys here. Alright, uh, so discussion of vote on who will represent Freetown in the teachers' union negotiations. Jared, since you're the only person aboard with children in the school systems. Would you like to represent the teacher union?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I'll entertain a motion to uh appoint um Sarah, Jared Zager. To represent the uh Freetown and the teacher union represent representations.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, geez, I can't speak. Usually can't, today's worse than usual. Alright, so this is um discussion of vote on exemption to allow Kevin DeSmeris to continue working temporarily as both the board health agent. And the data acquisition infrastructure maintenance effective three thirty-one twenty twenty-two. So I know we already talked about this, is this extending out the?
Yes, it's just, just to give him one more month in case there's an emergency, for the most part, I think he'll, he'll be done at the end of this month. He's been coming in like an hour early trying to work with Dave, the new uh, the new uh water maintenance uh gentleman.
Yep.
But just in case there's an emergency in the month of March or something, uh we wanted to be able to have that, otherwise he can't get paid.
No, I I understand, yeah, and we, and we obviously need that position, we need him there for that, so. Makes sense to me, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve um this exemption.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, sorry, yeah, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So uh change Victoria D Antoni's appointment date for the zoning board recording clerk to be effective. Two, 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 two.
No, I like that.
Uh so, was this, this just a mis- you know, misprint before?
No, it, no, we just um, we needed to do some procedural things, so it's just sort of.
Alright, so. So I'll entertain that motion?
I'll make it.
Alright, I'll uh second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So weird having two people.
You're the one who asked the whole twice.
I was, I was laughing cuz you know, Jared's making the motion to appoint himself, it's funny, yeah.
Yeah, that's classic small town stuff right there. Alright, so um, meeting minutes from two seven twenty twenty-two and two eleven twenty twenty-two, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now this uh is discussion of vote on the host community agreement between um Bird Dog Distribution LLC. And MCC Manufacturing LLC, is this Bird Dog like the shorts and pants?
It's called Bird Dog, I don't know, um actually, and so there's no vote, I just wanted to get, get up to date, and actually the. The other one isn't on here, um, I just wanted to let you know that we originally had. A development, and and a uh host community agreement with American.
Yes.
Uh Campanelli. They, so now they've come in with these subleases for uh host community agreements for all of these sort of tenants within.
Yeah, cuz, cuz they don't actually grow the product, they sublease out those space to other.
And so the, when I, when I was looking at this, and the original host community agreement that's was done, and I, I wanna say two thousand and fifteen. It's over five years old, so it's sort of outdated, and it was for medical marijuana only, and now they're doing recreational marijuana. So I'm like, you know, I just don't feel comfortable with this agreement moving forward. Um and American actually gave us the funds to pay for town council to negotiate a new agreement, and so um. I went and toured the facility up there, which is a thirty thousand square foot facility. And they're entertaining like another seven hundred thousand square feet. Um so, you know. I, I guess, there's just some. We're, we're in the middle of negotiating, we're working on, they're calling this new agreement like a development agreement as opposed to a host community agreement. And the host community agreement is to just address the impacts on the town, right? Like additional impacts due to marijuana facility being in your town, and I've really spent some time with this in terms of. To be real, like what are the impacts, so just so you are aware of what I thought the impacts are is. We used to have a dare program within the school system.
Yeah.
That we haven't been able to fund, right, and that's a police officer basically that goes into the schools and talks to the kids.
I remember very clearly.
Right, we haven't been able to fund it, and now I don't know that we'd call it dare, but something similar. So I thought, well, the cost of a police officer, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and I I'm not saying that's how much they make, but with their benefits and everything, that might be the cost. So I think that's a very real program that I'd like to see that we'd be able to start up again. And, and the thought process is to deter children from drugs, right? My other thoughts are always this, that if we can use some money to fund children's programs. Sports programs and whatnot, I think that's the way you keep kids out of drugs, right, if you can keep them busy and occupied with sports, so. I don't have uh necessarily a plan for that, but that's always in sort of my mind or my mind, you know, my thought process, um.
Uh yeah, I like to, I'd be curious to see what other towns have done in this situation, right? Because I think that the law is pretty clear that it has to be to, the only funds you can really get, get raised from a host community agreement is to offset. Impacts, right?
Right, but you have to be able to, so now that, what's happening is the, these c- c- companies, you know, you can charge up to three percent of their gross revenues, right? But now these companies that are established are making quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
They're pushing back and they're suing towns.
Yeah.
So when I'm looking at these, I'm looking at very real hard numbers, I'm not looking at, okay, we're just gonna charge three percent to be cop lanch. I, I'm really trying to find.
No, I think it's, it's only fair, right?
Right, and I've reached out to the school system and they said, yep, they'd be interested in some help with their educational programs. I've talked to Kyle Nabbett, the police chief, about the dare program, and I think this is not crazy money. Um the other thing I will tell you is, being up there, I think they're in need of sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um as they grow, right? So that's something that I'm sort of working and talking to them about how we can maybe possibly work together to bring sewer up there. So I kinda just wanted to let you guys know where I was at with these, that these things are happening, I I'm working with them. But also to get your sense of uh, am I, you know, are you okay with the way I'm going? Or is there something, other impacts that you see that I'm not exploring?
Yeah, no, it's, I like where you're going with this, um, I'd like to think about the impacts a little more, I, nothing, you know. I mean, I, obviously there is like the concern of potential crime because they're, they're dealing with such a valuable. But we'd have to monetize, how do, how do you put a dollar figure on, on, I mean, are we actually hiring more police and having a bigger police presence around there? I don't know if that's true yet, right?
Right.
But that's, nothing's happened yet.
Right, and they're, they're in their infancy, right, I think they just opened in two thousand and twenty during COVID. So we don't necessarily have a real good sense of the impacts at this point.
Yep.
Um so far, I will tell you, there's been no crime there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I like the idea that you're coming at us with things, or say us them, with, okay. We're going after this, here's a dollar amount, right, cuz it's hard numbers versus trying to figure out diluted numbers to appoint it. Hiring an additional police officer, well, how much of that time was spent in that police officer's day to deal with them, cuz that's.
Yeah.
The other ninety-nine percent of the day, they're not worried about it's not impacting them, so.
But yeah, but a dare officer, I think you can cut, kinda draw that.
Like, like a hundred percent, like, it's gonna be in the schools, I mean, I mean, and that has just so many impacts, right? I think it's great to, to cheer for drug use, but also, I think we've gotten, and I'm, I'm hoping that it will help. Children realize that police are good, right?
Yeah.
And not um bad, and that, and that's a culture that I think we need to start reinstilling in our children on some level, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
And, and we can do that by putting the, the police in a, in a certain position within the school. And like I said, um, yeah, that's where I'm at with the dollar figure, I I'm still working on it. And there's more than one uh marijuana company, right, there's the other company that came in as well. So even that cost of the dare officer wouldn't necessarily be borne by one company. So, um, that, that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, to Trevor's point, I would like to try and think about it and try and think if I can think of any other angles that we might be able to effectively. Go after, um, you know.
Yeah.
It's something there, it's something there, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's all, that's all, just so you're no, so that you know that this is going on and you can think about it and.
Yeah, that's great.
Talk about it, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, uh vote to open the annual special town meeting warrant. As of today, two twenty-two twenty-two, so um and it closes on three twenty-eight. So I'll entertain a motion to open the special, the annual special town meeting warrant.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion vote on the right of first refusal assessors, assessors map two zero six lot forty-three zero, known as the George D William lot. So, this was on page twenty-eight. This is a different one than we talked about last week, right?
Correct, correct.
From a couple weeks ago, I totally lost track of time.
Yeah.
It's the same situation, though.
It is, it's chapter, it's land that was held under chapter sixty-one. Um it's being sold and. They have to offer you the first right, oh, to the town, the first right to purchase the land at the price that they have sold it for. See if I can find that, and um, I think it's forty thousand dollars. And if you, you know, if the town wanted to buy it, we have to buy it, otherwise we forfeit our first right of refusal. Um, and the land will be sold and, and taken out of chapel.
How many acres is it? See, I'm looking at it right now.
Eight point five. So when these come in, Luanne sends them to the department heads to say, hey, is this anything, you know, that you'd be interested in? Conservation, planning, um, because sometimes there's things that we don't know about the land, right?
Yeah, of course.
Might make it um valuable to the town. Um so we have, she has done that, we have not received, we received one response just asking what the cost was, but we haven't received any of the boards. Saying they were interested in this. And. I wanna say this is like the old boy in property, but.
Okay.
Before I say that, I wanted to just check, I don't know if you knew what I'm talking about, but.
I don't know if I do. What, what old property?
The old boy in property off the locusts.
Okay.
Off in the back, it's kind of wet.
Yeah. Alright, well, either way, okay, I know. I don't.
Yeah, it's, so she gave me a map, right? Right here, so it's sort of like a landmark.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I don't think the town has any, you know, value here for the town. So with that, so I guess I will entertain a motion to um.
Not exercise.
Yeah, not exercise the first right of refusal, taking it, not exercise the first right of refusal for their assessors map two zero six lot forty-three zero, known as the George D Williams lot.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, discussion of vote for the application to utilize public roadways. Uh for mixed taste cycling event run by Rock Hard Racing on Sunday four ten twenty twenty-two. And so I'm assuming the chief is aware of this and hired a chief?
Yeah, chief, both chiefs and the highway surveyor have signed off on the.
Great. I think these guys that put on the, the uh Freetown fifty. They make it like, that's the hardest mountain bike race in the world. It's ridiculous. I am a mountain bike myself, I don't know if that makes me biased in this, but. I will uh entertain a motion to approve this um application.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval for um, so this is Beach Bluff Auto Sales License Renewal for a class two motorcycle. Uh motor vehicle license effective two, two twenty-two through twelve thirty twenty-two. And. Is this just, is there any reason why this one didn't come through with all the other?
We sent them a couple of letters in the fall and they didn't respond.
Okay.
We got a cancellation of their bond, so we just let it go, and then the first week or second week in. Um January, they sent in the application, we have the bond paperwork and everything in place.
Okay. And so, yeah, I don't see any reason to. Deny it. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the auto license.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
I don't see my wife here, is she all set?
She's all set, we, we did her out, we came out of order, so she would have to sit here and listen to me.
Alright.
Have it going.
Thanks, guys, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, discussion of vote on approving the contracts between the town of Freetown and Cartographic Associates, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Uh Inc. for the tax map maintenance and planning map proposal, and I've been informed that. They take care of like the G I S map and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
Um and we don't, you know, is, they're the only uh act in town that does this?
Well, they've been doing ours for twenty years, so they take our assessors' maps and they update them, right? So if you've got a new subdivision, they will overlay that and put that on the assessors' map, so when you're looking at the current maps, they're current, right?
Yeah.
So, and they'll do a separate map with different layers for the planning, so. That's that separate bill for the planning department to get their, their maps according to what they need for specifications. So, this is something we do every year, uh and they, you know, they have the base map, so obviously you don't wanna go to a different provider.
No, and I like the way I use that map all the time, it's great.
So this is just, they have, they wanna, you know, have something signed saying that we're gonna pay them.
And it's what, thirty-eight hundred dollars, is that what it is, plus?
So there's no procurement, that needs to be, it's best practices, it's fine, they've been doing it for years, um.
And fifteen dollars per building, I have to change, okay, no problem, so. Uh so I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract.
A motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ambulance abatements, so uh we have ambulance payments in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred, forty-three dollars, thirty-two cents. And write offs in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars and forty-one cents totaling one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve these abatements and write offs.
Motion made.
Second now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh discussion of vote approve quote for the feasibility study for the fire station three from Compass Group Architecture. Wanna talk a little bit about this one?
Yeah, sure, so we all are aware that the fire station three has one bunk room for both female firefighters and male firefighters.
That's not gonna fly.
Right, so I actually toured the um fire station, I met, uh I, I called Compass Group Andy. I can't say his last name, but.
Yep.
He came out and met me there, and we went through it together, and I asked him for a quote, because I don't think this is something that can wait. But while I was there with uh Andy and the chief and quite a few of the firefighters, you know, we started talking and. Their facility was built in nineteen ninety-nine.
Really?
Yeah.
Was that long?
Yeah.
That's wild.
And nothing's been done, right, and so they were saying, hey, we, you know, eh, so for instance, during the snowstorm, their equipment is outside. So if they get an emergency call, they're on a snowstorm, they have to go out and shovel off the ambulance before they can go.
Yeah.
Um and there's other things in their facility that are just, it's very cramped, it's very small if you go in it. So I said, listen, give me a price to do this, as if you were gonna update it to last the next twenty years.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, we're probably only can fund the immediate needs immediately. So this is sort of a comprehensive feasibility study that will look at existing, the existing uh facility. And what they will need based on how many firefighters they're gonna have, blah, 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 blah. And it will just give us sort of, you know, elevation drawings, conceptual ideas. Because then, from there, we can take and get prices, okay, what is it gonna cost to build this? Or even if we were to take phase one, how, how much is it gonna cost to build, and that drives where we go from here. If it's greater than one point five million dollars, we have to hire an O P M by state law, like, but we have no way of knowing until we can kinda get this done.
Yeah, exactly, that makes sense, man.
I brought this before the building committee last week, I, I believe it was last week, and they voted to um approve this as well, so this has been approved by them. But I wanted you to prove it now, this all being said, I don't have funding, so.
So we'll have to go to.
So I want you guys to approve it, but there, there's, I have some funding within the town administration budget, but if I spend it on this, there will be. But if I spend it on this, there will be zero dollars for the rest of the year. Um, so, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna pull that trigger just yet because things might come up or we need funding, um. And the fire department does not have funding for this, so this may have to go to town meeting before we can fund it, but I just want you to
Well, I'd rather get all these things squared away and then worry about funding, you know?
Right, and if, if, if we get a little bit further down the line and I, the monies that we have in the town administration budget, we don't look like we're gonna need it, we can use it for this and get the ball rolling, cause I would like to get it rolling. Here's my ho- hope is I'd like to have some idea of what it would cost before town meeting so that we can start looking at articles for town meeting to say, hey, we're gonna need, um, you know, a million dollars for this addition. And not that that would necessarily be funded at town meeting, but you know, we've got the alpha fund stuff coming on too, so it's sort of, I, I need this whole comprehensive picture so that the selectmen and the town people can decide the priority, right, prioritize where we're gonna spend our money. And so I, it's hard for me to say, yeah, I, I know I need money, I just don't know how much, and yes, we need this, I, so I would like to pull the trigger prior to town meeting, but like I said, I, I need to wait a little bit further down the line before I expend all of our funds and then something comes up and I can't spend the money.
That makes sense to me.
But I want you guys to be okay with it and I can always come back and talk to you about the funding if, if, you know.
Yeah, now, I think that makes sense, so, uh, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, feasibility study for Fire Station Three from Compass Group Architecture.
Motion made.
Second now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item sixteen, right, you already did fifteen, okay. Discussion vote to include the following question on the April fourth, twenty twenty-two annual town election ballot. Shall the town of Freetown cease assessing the excise, uh, imposed over, under general law, chapter fifty-nine, section EA on certain animals, uh, machinery and equipment owned by individuals and non-corporate entities, uh, principally engaged in architecture? And there was some questions put out to, um, Mike McQ about, you know, this is pretty much a farm tax, right? Or animal, farm, farm animal tax?
Yeah.
So, un- unless this is a misprint, which it could be, the last year the tax was assessed was, it says FY eighty-one.
Yes, nineteen eighty-one.
It was nineteen eighty-one, I didn't know, but we were, we were in an hour saying, is that eighteen or eighty-one? And eighty-one doesn't surprise me, and the total amount billed was three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. There's nobody currently and so nothing has currently been taxed, so. Uh, this makes sense, I mean, why even have this, something, what, like, that doesn't make any sense for us to do. So, I'll entertain a motion to improve, include that question in the April fourth, twenty twenty-two annual town election ballot.
I will make that motion.
Alright, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we have anything else. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.